Yeah, I know. I mean, I mean, it's coming out. It's coming in. Between the appropriate hours, we weren't going to stay past five.
Hey, boy. How you doing?
Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council November 18th, 2014, meeting to order. Like, take this opportunity to welcome you all here this evening. Also like to ask if you would silence all electronic devices at this time. We will call Mayor Protem Cillo Fossett for tonight's application.
If I had a moment of silence, please. Amen.
Amen. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics. This time we'd recognize City Clerk, Ernie Ward. Ms. Ward.
The Lord has my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask there are potential conflicts of interest concerning tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item is approval of amendments, November 4th, 2014, City Council meeting.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda.
Motion, we adopt the agenda as written. Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to adopt and ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendations, to approve a 25 mile per hour speed limit for the Inglewood Drive, to approve a three-way stop at the intersection of Glywood Drive and Tiki Lane, to approve a no trucks zone on Loy Street between Anthony Street and Race Street. B, to approve the renewal of municipal agreement Schedule D, traffic signal system operations with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Municipal agreement establishes the reimbursement of mechanisms for maintenance and operations work with the City of Burlington conducts on the North Carolina DOT traffic signal C, to approve a contract with the City of Burlington and VHB Engineering, North Carolina, PC, for a corridor safety analysis on South Church Street from Charleston Avenue to Fifth Street. D, to approve the final change order number three to the South Burlington Wastewater Treatment Plant, Nutriental Improvement Improvements Contract with HG Reynolds Incorporated, to extend the contract time for 65 calendar days with a final net increase of $80,024.59 to the contract price. E, to approve budget amendment 2015-33 to replace office consoles in the Communications Division. State of North Carolina Secondary Public Safety Answering Points Program will help fund the project. That is spelled out in your agenda. Budget amendment 2015-34 Downtown, Burlington Downtown Corporation is spelled out in your agenda. G, to approve the change order number one to the Elwood Street Water System Improvements Contract with Silo Utilities Incorporated to add Texas Avenue Waterline Replacement and to approve budget amendment 2015-35, the amount of $225,552 to fund the project is spelled out in your agenda as well. H, budget amendment 2015-36 Substance Abuse, spelled out in your agenda. I, budget amendment 2015-37 Rico Appropriations is spelled out in your agenda. G, to award a contract with Supton Corporation, the amount of $997,097 to purchase two fire trucks for Fire Station Six utilizing the Competitive Group Program Exception, North Carolina General Statute 143-129E3, to approve budget amendment 2015-38 to fund the purchase.
May I move approve the consent agenda? Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Public hearing, two. Public hearing is in schedule to consider an application rezoned from R-15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development with use and development conditions as specified in the application. The process is located at the southeast intersection of University Drive and South Church Street, shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-27, Lot 6. A valid petition or protest has been received. This time we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We have an issue with this hearing in that the folks are not here yet.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Frank Longest, I've been meeting with those folks. They're being here momentarily. What we request, if it's possible, in the change of agenda, to allow the second item on the public hearing to be heard now, and the other item, I think, will be less extensive far as length, if you allow that change, please.
Any problems with that, Council?
No.
That take a motion, or can we just reverse them?
Go ahead and do it.
All right, that'd be great. This would be item number, excuse me, public hearing number three. Item three on the agenda, public hearing's been scheduled to consider an application rezoned from O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of two mile poles, billboards. The property is located south of Long Pine Road, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-2D, as being a portion of Lots Two and Eight. This time we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. This item has both staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations. We are requesting the rezoning with the use and development conditions that were submitted by the petitioner. Also, the Commission recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended. The Commission found that the zoning changes as requested would not adversely affect the adjoining property, would be in keeping with land use planning in the area, and was consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. This is the area of the request for the rezoning. That shows the two areas that are requested for the rezoning. I believe Mr. Longest is here to present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, my name is Frank Longest, and for the record, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holt Longest Wall Blates and Mosley here in Burlington. And our firm is pleased to represent the Sedge Paul family, the owners of two tracts of land. As you can see from the map, one tract is butted in 10 acres, the other tract is butted almost four acres. At the present time, when those two tracts of land are located, three wooden, non-conforming old billboards. So as my dad used to say, what we propose to do is get three ugly billboards out of sight and have two new conforming billboards to replace those. The precedent has been established here by the City Council in the past, as you may remember. Behind the Elks Lodge, there is a billboard that's been created very similar to this. There's one there on Highway 49, the ramp that comes up from 49, headed east on 8540. There was another one that was done on the Old Hanford Brickyard property recently. And what we're requesting at this time is that two tracts, as outlined in red on the application, 50 by 100 feet, be rezoned by the conditional use to permit the construction of two new monopole two-faced billboards. The distance between those billboards will conform to the City of Burlington's distance requirements, and also conform with the NC DOT requirements. The surface of the boards will be, as I say, two-faced, headed in each direction for traffic on Interstate 8540. The billboards will be of steel construction. We plan, as part of the application, to have those lit with LED lighting, which we believe is beneficial both as to the property owner by saving energy by having that LED lighting, and also for the neighborhood by having that lighting that can be directed toward the billboard, and that we believe will cut down the ambient lighting that's normally disposed by the traditional lighting on billboards. I'd be glad to pass among you, if you take a moment, to look at some pictures we have. If you care to look, these pictures are done on Pine Way Drive, headed east.
May I?
Sure, absolutely.
These pictures show first the billboard that is existing there that will not be removed, and then you will see the older billboards, the three of those that will be removed and replaced by, as I say, the new two-monopole conforming billboards. And we believe that this is better for the City of Burlington, it's better for the neighborhood, and of course, it's certainly beneficial to our client and the advertising media, and then having a source of light that's more energy efficient, and then, as I say, less harmful to the ambient lighting in the neighborhood. We believe it's all a good situation for everyone involved. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Longest.
I got a quick question. Mr. Longest, how long have both sides been there, you know?
Since I've been in Burlington, 1972. Isn't that correct?
Any other questions for Mr. Longest? This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
I seen him. I went out there.
May I move approve the public hearing?
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
May I make a motion to approve the rezoning of these two pieces, two parcels? I need a reason.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'm assuming with no other conversation, no second, then it will die without a second. Is that the wishes of the Council? Okay, next item on the agenda will be item, back to item number...
It's Mayor.
Sir.
Mayor.
They may need a motion.
The husband asked, you want to make a motion to deny? You know that...
Well, my, yes, we can, but I was thinking that with no second, that it died, period.
Yeah, Mr. Huffman, he just made the, you know, the inquiry, asked whether or not the Council wanted to, but procedurally, you're correct.
Yeah, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, back to item number two. Public hearing, item number two, a public hearing's been scheduled to consider an application rezoned from R-15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development with the, with use and development conditions as specified in the application. The property is located at the southeast intersection of University Drive and South Church Street, as shown on Alamance County Tax Map 3-27, Lot 6. A valid petition or protest has been received. This time I'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning staff recommended approval of the request for rezoning with the use and development conditions submitted by the petitioner to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who voted five to one recommending approval of the request for rezoning. The Commission recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The Commission found that the zoning changes as requested would not adversely affect the adjoining property, would be in keeping with land use planning in the area, and was consistent with the comprehensive land use plan.
Questions for Ms. Nelson.
I believe Lawson Brown is here to speak.
Mr. Brown, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. I apologize for not wearing my tie tonight, as I typically do to appear before you, but I didn't get to slide out and get my 15-minute nap and retool this afternoon. We've been working diligently. Representatives of Twin Lakes are here. We've got two little tweaking of language we need to work on, and we would ask that you set this over since the public hearing has started. Just set the public hearing over for two weeks to allow us to work through those details. Mr. Kaloe is here representing the Glenwood Acres neighbors, and he and I are totally copacetic on the agreements that have been signed that related to not only this rezoning, but also the rezoning that you did back in May. And Mr. Longest is here on behalf of Twin Lakes, but Twin Lakes reps are here. If you had any questions for them, but we'd simply ask that you do that, and then I think we'll have it here on the silver platter for you, and something that you'd feel very comfortable with.
Mr. Brown, quick question. Are you saying that everybody's in agreement with continuing the public hearing?
That is my understanding, Mr. Ward. Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any difference, Mayor? Does anybody want to be heard? You know, when you advertise as public hearing, you know, people...
Sure.
Come out, and, you know, sometimes they have things to say.
What you're asking for is a two-week continuation.
That's correct.
But you're saying, gee, if they're here and want to speak, you have no problem with that.
Yeah, and we can still continue the public hearing, but, you know, some people, it's advertised, they come and want to speak, so...
Certainly, I understand that, Mr. Ward, and I'm totally agreeable if the Council is so inclined.
Okay. First and foremost, do we want to continue it in two weeks?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Is that, do we need that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I would ask, Mayor, just, if we would, just ask if anybody wants to be heard tonight, then we can make a motion.
Okay. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Mr. Kaloe, you're in the back raising your hand. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the only reason I ask to speak is not because I'm an attorney and like to hear the sound of my own voice, but simply because I will not be in town when you meet the next time, and I just wanted to appear before the Council myself, and thank you for your patience in allowing this matter to be repeatedly continued, and also thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Tam for their efforts to get everything worked out. We have worked out an agreement, and so far as the residents of Glenwood Acres are concerned, and on the basis of that agreement, we're able to support the project. And I just say that because I'll be unable to attend the next time you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Let the record reflect that as well. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, so we...
I'll make a motion to the hearing be continued till, I guess, first meeting in December.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item...
We are on item four.
What?
We are on item four.
I think that... Next item on the agenda is under New Business, item number four. City Council will consider selecting the finalists to fill the vacant council seat. This time we'd recognize City Attorney David Huffman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the purpose of this selection process this evening is to select three finalists from the 12 individuals who have expressed an interest in being appointed to the vacant seat on the City Council. The City Council will then interview the three finalists at the December 1, 2014 work session. At the December 2, 2014 City Council meeting, the City Council will vote and select from the finalist an individual to fill the City Council vacancy. All meetings of the City Council pertaining to the appointment of an individual to fill this vacancy are open public meetings pursuant to NCGS 143-31810. This selection process is being conducted pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-63, the Burlington City Charter, Section 3.01(c), and the policy adopted by this City Council on February 16, 2010, captioned Procedure for Filling Vacant Seat on City Council. Pursuant to that policy, a notice of solicitation of application for vacant seat on the Burlington City Council was published in the Times News on October 1, 2014, and again on October 8, 2014, soliciting letters from individuals who are interested in being appointed to the vacancy. The deadline to submit those letters of interest to the City Clerk was October 17, 2014, at 4:00 p.m. The City Clerk received letters from 13 individuals expressing an interest in the City Council vacancy. Of these individuals, one was determined not to be a resident of the City of Burlington and Thoston eligible to be considered. The 12 letters of interest were hand-delivered to each of you on October 20, 2014. You, the Mayor and the City Council members, have had an opportunity to review those 12 letters of interest, and will this interest select your top three candidates? We'll refer to them as finalists. I want to take this opportunity to explain what the voting procedure will be this evening. City Attorney and the City Clerk will conduct successive rounds of voting. To become a finalist, a candidate must receive three or more votes. In any round, if a candidate receives three or more votes, that individual will become a finalist. In each round of voting, each council member will cast one vote for each remaining finalist position to be filled. I'm going to go ahead and read the rest of the procedure. Round one, each council member will be given a written ballot in round one of the 12 candidates listed in alphabetical order. Each council manager, member will select three candidates from the ballot, circling his three choices on that ballot. The City Clerk will collect those ballots and read each council member's choice into the record. The City Attorney and Clerk will tabulate the votes submitted. If one or more candidates receive three or more votes in round one, that individual or those individuals shall be finalists for the vacancy. Unless all three finalists are chosen in round one, the City Council will proceed to voting in round two. Round two, each council member will be given a written ballot of 12 candidates listed in alphabetical order. However, the name of any candidate who qualified as a finalist in round one will be redacted. Each council member shall cast one vote for each remaining finalist position to be filled. An example of that, if one candidate qualified as a finalist in round one, then each council member shall vote for two candidates in round two, as an example. The City Clerk will collect the round two ballots and read each council member's choices into the record. The City Attorney and Clerk will tabulate the votes submitted. If one or more candidates receive three or more votes in round two, that individual or those individuals will be finalists for the vacancy. Unless all three finalist positions have been selected in round one or two, the City Council will then proceed to vote in yet round three. Round three of voting shall be conducted by the City Attorney, reading aloud in alphabetical order the names of the candidates, other than those candidates who have already qualified as finalists, calling for a show of hands of the council members as to each candidate. Once again, any council member, each council member, excuse me, shall cast one vote for each remaining finalist position to be filled. If one or more candidates receive three or more votes in round three, that individual or those individuals will be finalists for the vacancy. Unless all three finalists have been selected in rounds one, two, or three, the City Council will proceed to round four and then subsequent rounds of voting. In round four and subsequent rounds of voting, for purposes of those rounds, the same procedure outlined above in three shall be utilized. However, only those candidates who received at least one vote in the immediate prior round of voting will advance to the next round of voting. So, we are now at round one. Madam Clerk has handed out a written ballot to each of you, and at this point in time, there are three positions to be filled. We would ask that you, each of you, choose three votes, candidates. Circle those and hand those to the clerk, please.
Yeah, we thought a write-in vote was going to be difficult two weeks ago, didn't we?
Votes on the first round, Mayor Wall, Kathy Hikes, Richard Parker, and James Upchurch. Mayor Protem Fossett, Charles Carter, Kathy Hikes, Richard Parker. Councilmember Ward, William R. Baker, Kathy Hikes, Sang Ho Lee. Councilmember Butler, John Black, Kathy Hikes, James Upchurch. For round two, for the first round, Kathy Hikes will be an automatic... For round two, for the first round, Kathy Hikes will be an automatic finalist. If you'll give me just a second.
Mayor and council, according to pursuant to our procedure, Ms. Hikes's name has been redacted from the list of the 12, there are 11 remaining candidates on the written ballot for round two, which Madam Clerk will hand out at this point in time. There are two remaining finalist positions to be filled. We would ask that each council member must vote for two individuals.
Two.
Two.
Okay, the second round of votes, Mayor Wall, Richard Parker, James Upchurch. Mayor Pro Tim Fossett, Charles Carter, Richard Parker. Councilmember Ward, John Black, Richard Parker. Councilmember Butler, Richard Parker, James Upchurch. During round two, Richard Parker will now be your second finalist.
According to the procedure, round three of voting is conducted by the city attorney, reading aloud in alphabetical order the names of the candidates, other than those candidates who have already qualified. That would be Ms. Hikes and Mr. Parker, calling for a show of hands of the council members as to each candidate. Once again, each council member shall cast one vote for each remaining finalist position. That means you each have one vote in round three. Madam Clerk is gonna hand me a list of the candidates, if you would, please. I'm gonna read these in alphabetical order, round three, starting with William R. Baker. Show of hands is required for this round. William R. Baker. John R. Black, just one vote. Brenda Bean. Charles Carter. Clover Colonel. Brian Ireland. St. Holy. Patrick Mills. John Oates. James Upchurch. Three votes there. Pursuant to the procedures and charter, the three individual finalists for the vacancy on the city council will be Kathy Hikes, Richard Parker, and James Upchurch. These individuals will be interviewed by the city council with the work session on December 1, 2014, and will be voted upon the following night at the city council meeting on the 2nd of December. Mr. Mayor, there's nothing further.
Thank you. Thank both of you, Ms. Ward and Mr. Huffman as well. Be a public comment period?
Mr. Mayor, if you could, for their information, we'll have, the work session is at 5 o'clock on the, December, the, the day first.
First.
It's held downstairs in the planning conference room, and I would think this would be the first thing on the agenda, if that's okay with you guys.
You know, the last time, Harold, a follow-up on that, I think, we interviewed the candidates here in this room, you know, it, I would like to suggest we follow the same procedure with the council.
I would agree with that.
We can start it off here, and we can either continue it here, or we can move back downstairs, whatever you guys want to do.
We might, we have a consultant group to come in on the UDO, so we may move downstairs after that, 'cause we'll set up down there.
All right, so what we'll do, to make it clear, we'll start off right here, starting at 5 o'clock. Good point, thank you. Any other comments in reference to the process? All right, that brings us to public comment period, any? No, sir, okay. City council comments?
Couple, Mayor.
Okay.
I thank Tony Laws and Parks and Rec Department for the wonderful job they did at North Park. Really do appreciate it, and I think the general public wants to begin to use it, see how it looks. I mean, it's really beautiful, and I think the comments that I heard while I was there was really just great. And the other issue, we were not in session for Memorial, I mean, Veterans Day, and I'd just like to publicly say that we thank all the veterans that sacrificed for this country to keep us safe, and I had goes off to all the veterans.
And you represent the city Monday night as well.
Yes, sir.
Third Corral.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Fossett. We had a lot of help, we wanted to solve the Recreation Department, thank you very much.
Reminder of a couple of issues, 68th Annual Burlington Christmas Parade will be this coming Saturday, November 22, at 10 o'clock. I'm assuming that you want us at the...
Meeting at Home Builder Shelter, and you'll have a ride back to the parade.
Nine? What time we need to be there?
9 o'clock, but, you know, we need to be downtown by a little before 10, so we can get you on the float and everything.
All right, so we're gonna meet at the Home Builder Shelter at 8:40, at 9 o'clock, excuse me. All right, the city administrative offices will be closed Thursday, November 27, and Friday, November 28, in observation of Thanksgiving. And let me say this too, quickly, we had two nice ribbon cutting, cuttings this week. One was Honda Airjet, the second one was Sheets, and we appreciate the governor coming to Burlington, Alamance County, but, you know, as elected officials, we're the one who gets a lot of the praise for all the hard work, and obviously, that's not really true. The staff needs to be commended for a job well done on both of those projects, so we appreciate you very much for the hard work. Harold was there, it was, and Councilmember Butler was as well. It was a great event, one that we all would have been very proud of, with all the positive comments made, so thank you, staff, for a job well done. Also, it's been brought to my attention by staff that we have the UDO committee that is a working group. I know that Mayor Pro Tim Fossett volunteered. I just think we probably need a second council member in case someone misses a meeting. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of hard work with this, with this committee work, so if another council member would like to...
I'd be glad to do it. I agree with that, and I was glad to see Mayor Pro Tim Fossett step up and raise his hand to fill that role, but that's gonna be a tenuous task. That thing could be multiple, multiple meetings over a lengthy period of time, so I think it's a good idea to have two. I'd be glad to fill the other spot if it'd be acceptable, council.
You guys like that? Okay, good enough then. Ms. Nelson, you'll have Mayor Pro Tim Fossett and Councilmember Butler on your working committee. Anything else that needs to be brought forth? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.